Be notified by registered mail seven days prior to the hearing, which is today. We're not receiving such notification. Ask the board if you pass over the decision.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, and just for everybody's edification, this gentleman called me today. We do have a public hearing that's scheduled for six fifteen, which was properly applied for, but apparently the Mass General Law indicates that we are supposed to notify all the abutters, or all the abutters are supposed to be notified by the applicant before, or seven days or more before the before the hearing by certified mail. And I think you said to me today, you did receive something in the mail today, but it wasn't seven days before.
I have an unopened envelope from the select board stamps, February eleventh, which is today.
Did you open it?
I have not opened it. I have no idea what the contents are.
Can I ask why you didn't open it?
Because then I'd be notified.
And you'd be notified.
Right, but not within seven days required and not at the town's expense for postage and envelopes.
It's okay, well, just, just so we're clear, I did speak to our admin and the applicant did pay for that to be done. So there's no expense, but I defer to counsel to find out if Cindy, if you can tell us if we need to open this and continue it, or if we can continue it despite his objection because he was notified by certified mail within seven days. What's, what's the proper procedure?
Well, the statute does say you're supposed to be, you're supposed to have it noticed in the paper, which was done, posted, which was done. It was apparently on the website and he should have received certified or registered mail. However, he does have notice of the meeting. And it's my understanding that he's on a certification that as soon as it gets posted, he gets an email, gets notice of this. And my understanding was that happened in seven days ago. So hundred percent confidence when I say if you proceed, you can, I cannot. But I can say if you and there is a challenge, like somebody who has received specific notice because of him getting specific agenda items and notice and he is aware of the meeting and it would be a so it depends on how server the board feels.
All right, so what I'm, what I'm going to do at this point is proceed with the meeting at six fifteen. We're going to open the hearing and we'll discuss it further if we have to suspend it and continue it, we will, but we'll, we'll discuss it further than, but you can take a seat. Sure.
Was notified by the town's email notification of the select board meeting. However, are possibly other abutters that not here that did not sign up for these automatic notifications that should have the opportunity to be present.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I just need clarification because I was breaking up a little bit.
I agree.
But I think what I heard was Mass General Law does state it should be notified by registered mail within seven days. My understanding is that did not happen. And the fact that the gentleman is aware that it was happening through other means means he's aware of it, but it doesn't meet the letter of MGL, right? I mean, is that fair?
That's fair, but you know, you could be subjected to a challenge. The likelihood of that challenge being successful on these facts, particularly in light of his direct email notifications. And he can only speak to himself, not anybody else. It would be a tough case, but you know, I can't sit here and tell you somebody couldn't file a case.
We're already at, so we should talk about this at six fifteen just because we have a six o'clock hearing. So we should do that first and then.
I apologize, that's it.
No, no, no.
Yep.
All right, so hold that thought then.
So I move to open the public hearing for the transfer of an annual restaurant, all alcohol beverage license for QT Restaurant LLC DBA Alicante Mediterranean Grill Restaurant and Lounge eighty-four Oxford Road, Men in Mass under Mass General Law, chapter, chapter one, three, eight, section twelve.
Sir, a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The Men and Select Board will hold a public hearing in the Upper Town Hall, twenty Main Street, Mendon, Mass on the twelfth day of the month of October twenty twenty-two at six P M to consider the application for the transfer of an annual restaurant, all alcohol beverage license for QT, Q and T Restaurant LLC DBA Alicante Mediterranean Grill Restaurant Lounge eighty-four Oxford Road, Men in Mass, zero, one, seven, five, six, under Mass General Law, chapter one, thirty-eight, section twelve. All interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard.
Does anybody want to be heard? Somebody like to make a motion?
I move to close the public hearing for an annual restaurant, all beverage license for Q and T Restaurant LLC DBA Alicante Mediterranean Grill Restaurant Lounge eighty-four Oxford Road, Men in Mass, zero, one, seven, five, six, under Mass General Law, chapter one, thirty-eight, section twelve.
Second. Motion made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the transfer of an annual restaurant, all alcohol beverage license for Q and T Restaurant LLC DBA Alicante Mediterranean Grill Restaurant Lounge eighty-four Oxford Road, Men in Mass, zero, one, seven, five, six under Mass General Law, chapter one, thirty-eight, section twelve, pending the receipt of positive routing slips.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we have the motion to approve it.
Now, this would be for that, this is for the common vic license.
Oh, right.
I, so I move to approve a common victory license for Q and T Restaurant LLC DBA Alicante Mediterranean Grill Restaurant Lounge eighty-four Oxford Road, pending the receipt of positive routing slips.
Second. Made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
Sure. I'm just more curious clarification, so we're just transferring ownership or we're just transferring the legal name or it's going from who to who?
Legal name and ownership. So the transfer of the license is going to a different corporation?
Would you mind to come up just because they, they can't hear you at home? Want to sit right there at one of the microphones? Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name's Chris Musa, the owner and corporation of Q and T Restaurant LLC. I'll be transferring the, will be transferring the liquor license from Alicante to my corporation.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussions?
Scale of operation remaining same.
Same, exactly.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I move to approve an entertainment license Monday through Saturday for Q and T Restaurant LLC DBA Alicante Mediterranean Grill Restaurant Lounge eighty-four Oxford Road, pending the receipt of positive routing slips.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this a, is this a new?
Yeah, the same question, was there, was there?
If you don't mind coming back up.
You have some, some questions about entertainment license. Do you know what your plans are?
Oh, whatever they currently do. I don't plan to change anything, which from my understanding, they don't really use entertainment that often. Maybe for if they have a function or anything like that, but other than that, they don't do any weekly bands or anything like that, so just the normal stuff they currently do.
So the, yeah, they do have like for, sorry, for New Year's Eve, they have a DJ. I've always only seen a DJ in there, maybe there was, at one time they had some local.
And somebody in the, in the lounge, I think.
Yep.
In the past.
However, keep in mind too that this does, this does give them the opportunity to do whatever they want with the entertainment.
All I would ask is if you have any, anything you expect to crown that you would notify the, the police chief? Yeah. So he'd be aware for, for those issues, so they'd be prepared for it. Correct. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Why don't we, we have five minutes before the second hearing. So why don't we go back and
Wait, discuss.
Consider appointment.
Sure.
So if we go back to number three? Somebody wants to make a motion?
Yep, I move to appoint Kalen?
Kalen.
Kalen?
Farragut.
Farragut, sorry. Kalen Farragut to the position of police officer for the Men and Police Department at a step one pay rate of one thousand ninety-two dollars and thirty cents.
Second. Motion made in second. Chief, do you want to tell us about?
So Kalen comes to us from Pittsburgh State University. He worked for the police department over there. He also went through the program over there, that five-year program, we end up with a master's degree at the end. He has a bachelor's right now. He's from, which academy did you graduate the?
Pittsburgh State University.
No, the fourth.
Oh, yeah.
So now we have three people work for us, some from the third, some from the fourth academy class, and some from the fifth. So they produce really good applicants. He has a year under his belt at the college, a local from Upton. And was one of our police explorers, so went through our program, how long ago?
Probably about eight years ago, I think I was fifteen years old when I started.
So he was up in the old police station upstairs doing the whole bit and, and it's nice to have him come back home to this area instead of working at Pittsburgh. So lives with mother, father and grandmother, right? So, so local roots, so he's replacing Charles Chapalas. Charles is originally from the Cape. He, he went to Florida and then he was in New Hampshire. He's been here for four years and now he's made his way back to the Cape. He's moving to Chatham, so he'll be down there fishing.
I have to say, you look familiar. And I'm looking at your mom and, and your dad. And I'm pretty sure that when you went to Camp Resolute, that you were in some of my classes.
I believe so.
Yes, and, and is it your uncle, Ben Gamski?
Cousin.
Cousin?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you come from a great family from my experience.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to Mendon.
Thank you. Just want to do a quick picture?
Yeah.
You have time?
Sixty seconds.
Usually Nick's here, yeah.
Join the new police station.
Yeah.
You can appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Okay.
All right, okay. All right, let's open the. So Mike, do you want to, I mean, just given that there could be discrepancy here, I mean, the applicants here as well, do we want to postpone this to our next meeting? Well, that's my question, and that's what I wanted to find out, if we need to open it and postpone it? I mean, open it and suspend it? Or if we open it, or we just don't open it at all? So counsel, if we open this hearing and suspend it for two weeks to give note, to give the applicant the opportunity to notify all the butters officially by by certified mail, is that, which is the more proper way? I mean, I.
I, my, my son would be the meeting. That, that, you know, you're opening it under that set of notice. If you're going to not go forward with the meeting tonight, I would, I would just redo it if that's what you want to do.
All right, then what I'm, what I'm going to do is I think I can make the decision to just, what we're going to do is postpone this for two weeks to give the opportunity to give proper notice, which requires we'll reschedule this for two weeks from now. And the applicant will have to get proper notice by certified mail within seven days. Okay? Yeah, I think it's just the safest for all parts. I hate to see something get call up and now we have a legal fight over, over two weeks. All right. All right. Thanks, everybody. Okay. All right, the, the next issue I'm going to take is, let's go to fourteen next, I think that's, that was the order that I had asked for. Is a discussion about the, because it affects everything else in this line. Is a discussion about the, the bylaw that passed at the twenty twenty-two annual town meeting that was approved by the Attorney General, and we get notification at the beginning of, the very beginning of September. And we talked about this two weeks ago and the request was that we would hear back from the Attorney General. And I did hear back from one of the lawyers who works in the, works in the local services division. And what I was told was that, as Cindy anticipated, that they don't give opinions. They said it does apply to, it does comply with all the other Mass General laws, however. And, and she agreed that clearly the law says that we can appoint somebody who is elected back to the select board or the planning board to either the zoning board of appeals or the conservation commission. It also says that anybody who is elected to either of those boards cannot otherwise serve on the zoning board of appeals or the conservation commission. However, the only mechanism of enforcement would be for us to remove and replace anyone who was already appointed. They could certainly resign, but if they don't, our only option would be to make a motion to remove any member who's serving and then appoint a replacement. So we have two choices, we can either just pass over this and allow the members who are currently on those boards to continue to serve until their till it's until their appointment expires, or we can make a motion to remove them. Now, I know Cindy and I did discuss this and she does have an, she said she was supposed to talk to the same attorney tomorrow. I don't know what they're going to tell her different than what they told me, but Cindy, you have a comment you want to make?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Muted.
What else is news? The only added, added thing I would say is that I am scheduled to speak directly with Kelly tomorrow, I believe, ten o'clock in the morning. So as now I, Mike has had a conversation with her, I have not had a conversation with her, I will be having one with her tomorrow.
Okay. Yes, it's a clarification, and we'd received an email from Conservation Commission citing, you know, Mass General Law and how people would be removed from committees requiring a public hearing, you know, with cause. Would this fall under that statute?
Unless it's a CONCOM member, the CONCOM statute is specific to CONCOM. Everything else is, is subject to regular old appointment. If you appointed someone, you can unappoint someone or remove them. But the CONCOM statute is unique and has specific procedures in it.
Right, so would that override our bylaw because one of the position committees is the CONCOM, right?
Right.
I, I don't know that I would say it would override, but you would follow a removal process that's outlined in the CONCOM statute.
So that would lead me to say that we probably need to have a public hearing. And that needs to probably be posted, and that probably means we should probably pass this over today. Yeah, I would ask counsel what, what your advice is.
My advice is, my advice is, it's, you know, legally, I've given you my opinion, there's disagreement about it. Kelly, Mike has relayed what he's heard from Kelly again, again, I will speak to her tomorrow. I can't say what, you know, I can't confirm or deny anything she said because I haven't spoken to her yet. If you want to go forward, I don't know that voting to go forward, let's just talk about the CONCOM. If you vote to go forward with instituting the process, I mean, at some point you have to make the decision to do that, then the actual implementation of how you do it is governed by the statute. So whether, if you wait to do it, you're waiting to start that process. And the CONCOM is in charge of how a CONCOM member is removed.
So, so I, I know we have a new bylaw here, right? And I know that there's, you know, some discrepancy or confusion, whatever we want to call it. What is the driving force to get these two people out so fast that we have to have multiple meetings over it? When they have a term that they're, you know, one is what, one year and one is two years away? That at the end of that, there's no more discussion on this. These people have served in these positions for quite some time, have donated their time, and we're just going to great lengths to just kick them off as fast as possible. So I'm just confused why that this is even a, a discussion. Why can't we just vote to say, let them ride it up?
I think, I think that's an option, there's two, two directions you go here, right? You, you, you let the term expire or, and I think the only driver here is people pass the bylaw, assuming it was in effect, I think, rightly or wrongly.
That is exactly, that's.
So there's, to your point, there's a choice, do we wait or don't we? And I think that was the choice put before us last time, right? So I, I mean, I would agree, there's a, there's a choice we can make on direction.
Right, and my, my thought originally was that this would be the end of the discussion tonight. We would either, as a board, can decide to continue this and, or make a decision tonight or just not spend any more time on it and just do what, what, what the A G says is the option is, you know, we just don't enforce it and just wait until they I guess what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do based on your appointment with her tomorrow in this call for a public hearing is we'll take it offline, you can talk to her tomorrow and then I'll decide if we're going to put this on for a public hearing or just, or just drop it.
Right, just to.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think I think there's a decision from a board's perspective to say, and, and, you know, I'll tell you, I'm leaning towards because I'm sort of tired of sort of the discussion. I'd prefer to rip the Band-Aid off and just, just move forward because I feel that was the intent in the spring. But, so maybe the board needs to say, what direction do we want to take? Then we can figure out what steps to take because CONCOM requires the steps laid out of that Mass General Law. Z B A does not.
Right.
But I mean, I think I would just want the board to make a decision on what direction we want to take and then we can figure out how to take those steps. Does that make sense? I mean, that should be my preference, so we at least don't walk out with a another question.
Allow the members to continue their appointments until the appointments expire. Is there a second to that? All right. All right, so there's no second. Does anybody else want to make a different motion? Let's, well, you know, let's take them, for the Z B A, there is no public hearing required, so let's, is there anybody who wants to make a motion? Go ahead, Cindy.
The only thing I would, would say is, whatever position you decide to take, you need to be consistent with both positions. You can't say, we're going to remove one now and let the other one serve it out. That would be something that would be unacceptable because you're taking into consideration.
Well, but except that one of them require, apparently requires a public hearing and one of them doesn't be on this board, right?
That doesn't mean that you can't, you know, vote to proceed under, to take whatever steps are required. But I do not suggest that you do one thing for one position and a different course of action for the other position.
So, so if we say we want immediate removal, we just need to move forward the CONCOM path, whatever time, length of time that takes and the Z B A, but they're both immediate removal, they just have different processes to get it done. Is that fair?
Yes, I believe that is the case. I just need to double check the CONCOM policy and process, but you would need to just vote to have it effective immediately according to the removal processes authorized or required for each position.
Looks like Carl has his hand up.
Go ahead, Carl.
Yep, with, with all respect to the chair, I believe it would be imprudent for the select board to take action until our lawyer has had a chance to talk to their lawyer.
Which lawyer?
We, our town council speaking tomorrow morning at ten A M with someone, a lawyer from the Attorney General's office.
Right.
Well, we could make a contingent if needed to.
Well, again, this has been a, a long process and and I did speak with that person, but I, I don't disagree that we certainly can have her speak, but we could still, I'm still going to accept the motion to make it, you know, contingent. And, and if we do take a vote, Carl, it would be, it would not take effect until the public hearing is, is pointed out in your notes. So so I guess I'm looking for a motion. Let's start with the, with the CONCOM first.
Well, I would like, can I take and make a motion to move forward on immediate removal of any positions that conflict with the town bylaw passed in the most recent town meeting?
I, I think it would be that you'd make a motion that you would, immediate removal of, of anyone who any member of the, of the select board or planning board that is appointed to the zoning board of appeals or the conservation commission. So moved. All right, is there a second? Is there a second?
Standing for this.
All right, so there is no second, so unless somebody asks me to put it on the agenda again, I'm going to consider this.
I, I just want to say that, I mean, you, you, as a board, we've got to decide one way or the other.
Yeah.
So we had both options on the table, we're unable to get a second for either one.
I agree.
So I think we've got to make a decision at some point and, and just saying, we've got to.
Yeah, my hands are a little bit tied, but all things considered, I, I would lean towards the will of the voters. I mean, it was both for and against, it was argued as if it was going to take place right away. And rightly or wrongly, whatever our personal feelings are, that's, that's what the voters intended.
Well, I, I don't disagree, but what I'm saying to you is that, and, and maybe counsel is going to come up with a third way. But there's only, I was told there's only two ways to remove these, either, either they, well, let's take the CONCOM first, all right? They have to resign or we have to remove them. In order to do that with the CONCOM, there has to be a public hearing. For the Z B A, there doesn't, it needs to be somebody, they're going to make a motion to remove any member of the planning board or, or, or select board that is appointed to the, who is currently serving on the Z B A, we'd have to remove them.
All right, so and based on your last, if, if you basically said this is not going to be on another agenda unless we bring it back to be put on an agenda as it stands now, that's fine. Let's move on.
Okay.
I'm done.
All right, there is.
Besides this whole appointing because of the bylaw, am I correct to understand that somebody resigned from conservation recently?
We're, we're getting to that. We're, we're getting to that.
Okay.
All right. But we're just, we're getting to that.
I didn't know if that was, okay.
Yeah. All right. So let's see. One, two, three. Number nine.
Cindy's got her hand up.
Go ahead, Cindy.
I'm just, I just want to clarify that the board has not voted to remove and has not voted to let them serve out their term. And that's what happened because you guys did not get a second on either vote. Is that correct?
Yes. So.
In my opinion, at some point, there needs to be some action by the board to take or not take action. Whether, not until you put it back on or not, but right now you don't have an actionable motion to do anything other than not talk about it anymore.
And that's, and that's why I would ask that you keep your appointment tomorrow with the, with the attorney general's office. Because that needs to be answered. And if, if a member of this committee asks me to put it back on, then we'll, then we will.
I will talk to the AG tomorrow and then I will send Kim and all of you, or Kim at least, a summary of everything that the AG said.
Thank you.
All right. So number nine, there's a, there's actually a mistake here. There are, there actually are. With, with the one that just, make sure that's not me pushing this in my button, in my pocket.
No, it is.
No, I just shut it off. All right. So, so actually there are two, there are two Concom positions that need to be filled. One of them is the one that was, the appointment that expired on, in June of 2022 for three years, that, that was, that was Tim Icardi, who never, who has never come forward and indicated he wanted to be reappointed. He hadn't done his ethics training, although according to the, according to the town clerk, he did submit it recently in an effort to stay on as the assistant building inspector. So there's also a second opening. This is the one that was recently vacated. Normally, we would leave somebody open, we'd post it for 45 days. So what I would be looking to do is to appoint, and according to the, to the Concom, they had suggested Bob Sweet was, was one of them, and there's a second one. D'Amelio, is that his?
I think we've received four, actually.
Yeah, we received four, but only two were interviewed so far. So we have one spot.
But it hasn't been 45 days yet since the vacation.
Since June? Sure, since the June one. Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about. That's the one I'm talking about. I'm talking about the one to be appointed for, to expire in June 30th, 2025.
And the person who'd been on the board did not send in a request?
That's correct.
Okay.
Right. And he hadn't done his, he hadn't done his, and according to town clerk, he hasn't expressed an interest to be reappointed. So I'd be looking for a motion to appoint Bob Sweet to the conservation commission for a term that'll expire on June 30th, 2025.
I disagree with the fact that, that Tim Icardi didn't want to be appointed to the conservation commission. And his ethics training has been done. He works in another town. It was just not submitted to the town clerk at that time.
Well, do you have any, do you have some documentation to it?
I, I, I'm almost 100% positive there was an email, but I, you'll have to give it.
Well, I've, I checked and I asked the town clerk because that's where it gets sent.
Well, no, it would get sent to Laura, wouldn't it? Laura's the one that sends out.
Well, Laura doesn't have it either because I asked.
Talking about the intent versus the intent to be reappointed.
Right.
Right. Versus the ethics training, which I think you might.
Right, which, which is done.
Well, both. No, I asked about both.
Right. Well, I agree, I agree. So, but the ethics training is, again, if the certificate wasn't submitted, it was, his, his training was done.
Well, I don't, what I was, what I, you know what, I don't know when it was done, but I do know that he submitted it to, to the town clerk. He said, she said, in connection with his desire to remain as an assistant building inspector. That's what she told me. And I don't have any documentation otherwise, and there is an opening. And, and of course, because there are two other openings, if he wanted to be reappoint, to be appointed to one of those other two openings, he could certainly go into the mix for that. But what I do know is there's an opening that needs to be done, and I know that Bob Sweet applied once before and stepped aside for Susan Cahalan. I think he's qualified and he's come to every meeting and he's here tonight. So I would ask for that motion.
I move to appoint Bob Sweet for a three-year term on the conservation commission.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
Can I just pause for process for a second? I won't change the outcome, but when we passed that policy a few years back about the number of dates and whatever, we wanted a recommendation from the, the board, and Carl is on here.
We have a recommendation.
I'm just, he's raising his hand, so I think maybe he can't give it himself.
Oh, go ahead, Carl. Carl, you muted? I think you're muted, Carl.
Yep, I was. Tim Icardi has been attending conservation commission meetings and acting as a voting member and signing documentation since June 30th. The reason being that quite often, it takes a couple of weeks or months after someone's term is expired before we get official notice of renewal. For example, that happened in Peter Coffin's case. So I do not agree with your contention that Tim Icardi has not, he has implicitly said he expects to remain on the board by attending meetings, participating in conversations with submitters and applicants, and voting, and signing documentation.
Okay. So when you and I had this discussion right after you were appointed, you told me that he hadn't. So you're telling me since then, he's told you that he wants to be.
He is, he has attended meetings and acted as a voting member.
Has he told, well, we also indicated back in June that anybody who was, who was up for reappointment could continue in their position until they were, until they were replaced. So has Tim Icardi told you that he wants to be reappointed?
Has he told you that he has not wanted to be reappointed?
Well, that's not the way it works. Everyone was asked to express an interest of being reappointed and send an email. And I told you that. So my question is, has he told you? And I'm okay with, I'm okay if he told you verbally, but has he told you that he wants to be reappointed because the town clerk says that he did not? So did he tell you that?
At your request, I did not have a conversation with him about his failure to complete his ethics paperwork. So therefore I did not have that conversation with him. That does not mean that he would be, I am not the person who should be asking to see whether or not he wishes to be renewed. That should be the authorizing committee, i.e. the select board.
Well, actually, I'm not gonna argue with you. We had this discussion and you're telling me he hasn't told you. And we, and again, like I said, if he wants to be reappointed, he can send a letter to one of the other open positions that's here now. But for now, the motion's been made and seconded to put Bob Sweet in that three-year position.
I just have a comment, and maybe it's back to town council, given Concom's process for removal. You know, this is, this is potentially a, it's almost a negative consent in terms of him not affirming his desire to continue. Does, is that the same as a resignation?
His term expired on June 30th, 2022, and he was in, and it needed, he continued as his reappointment, and he has not been reappointed. So that's a good question. Does it mean that we have to remove him at this point because he's been answering? Or can we appoint this person in that place?
I, I'm, I'm 100%, I understand. I'm 100% positive that Tim said he wanted to be reappointed.
Okay.
And again, here we are. Somebody that's been serving in this community.
Yeah.
On the conservation committee for, I don't even know how many years. And yet without even conferring with him to find out if there was an email sent that somebody to get it, because I'm pretty sure there wasn't.
What I'm, what I'm saying to you, and I'm not disagreeing with you, except to say that Laura doesn't have it. The town clerk doesn't have it. Carl says he hasn't had a conversation with him, and he certainly could have let me know. And this has been since June. And we have talked about it multiple times. Cindy, you have something you wanted to say?
No, I believe you asked me to say something. As a general rule, if someone's term expires, they continue to serve in that position until their successor has been qualified. That's because it's impossible to get someone new in place as soon as a term expires. I mean, that's general law, that's general principle. It has nothing to do with whether or not, you know, what you want to do with the conflict about whether or not an existing Concom member who seems to have been well-respected, whether you want to clarify his intent or not. I mean, that's the question that's before the board, as I see it. To me, that's, the legal question is, he serves until his successor is appointed. Whether or not you reappoint him, or you check into whether he really wants to be reappointed, if there's confusion, that's not a legal decision. It's a decision for the board to make.
Okay. So motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
Just a question. You, you keep referring to two other Concom positions in that Tim could affirm his desire to continue and fill one of those other positions. Are either of those positions ready to be filled now?
Well, the only issue is that somebody resigned and it hasn't been 45 days, but that's not a hard and fast rule.
When will the 45 days be up?
When he resigned, three weeks ago?
It's September 7th.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
So.
So we're close.
Ten days or so.
Yeah. So.
I might suggest this, because I do think somebody who's served on the board and apparently, you know, Carl, the, the, the chair of the board seems to think he wants to continue. I think it's probably a good idea to give him, or we proactively reach out and say, Tim, unless you respond affirmatively to this email, we're assuming you are, you do no, no longer wish to serve. I'm perfectly happy to appoint Mr. Sweet in 10 days at our next meeting and fill both positions. But I do think that giving Tim a chance to, you know, I've, I've missed emails in the past, so I'm not gonna hold somebody to, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Look, I'm fine with that. Except that, again, like I said, the town clerk told me that she spoke to him.
Yeah.
But you're right. That's fine.
Or in reverse, actually.
Well, I mean, I, I would prefer to give Tim the right of first refusal because I don't want him to feel like he's being removed to Lonnie's point.
Well, neither do I.
I think, I mean, I think that's fair also, and I don't know if it helps for me to.
Do we want to just? Well, do you want to, do you want to appoint, since, since Bob has been vetted? Carl, would you have a problem with having Bob put in that, that unexpired term, two years? Carl, you're muted.
Yes, but town council may want to speak first.
I'm confused. Is that unappointed position the one that the 45 days hasn't run yet?
Well, the, no, no. We, we had a, well, first of all, the 45 day is a policy that's not, it's not legally binding. At least that's what you told us before, when we discussed this in the past. So what's going on is we have this expired term that expired in June. And we posted back in August that there was open positions on the Concom and on the ZBA. And again, that was an email that was sent to everybody who's on the email list. So everybody was notified. Now we have this other one.
I'm sorry. I was gonna say, my only question is, from sitting here, and I could be wrong, it's, my understanding is, I'm sitting here that as of right now, there is only one position to be filled as we sit here tonight.
No, there are, no. There, there are two vacancies. There is the unappointed position from, back from June, and then there is something.
Which is ready to be filled today.
Right. Well, that's the one that we would just, the motion's been made and seconded. And that's the one that Tim Icardi has been, he's been continuing, as you advised us he could, until he was replaced.
Correct.
Now we're being told that Lonnie thinks that he did send an email and he said he did want to be reappointed. But there's no, nobody seems to have that email, or no one has had a conversation with him that he wants to be reappointed. Now, in addition to that, on September 7th, we had another member of the Concom who resigned, and that is an, an unexpired term to expire in 2024. Normally, we would post that for 25, for, I'm sorry, 45 days. It has not been 45 days. So the motion that's been made and seconded was to appoint Bob Sweet to Tim Icardi's, well, it was Tim, to the term that Tim Icardi had occupied until June, the end of June, 2022. And the discussion was just that it's thought that maybe he does still want to serve and he has been continuing to serve until he was replaced. So that's the motion that's been made and seconded at this point.
So there was, there was an email back on September 2nd from Carl about the fact that they had changed the elected officers, and it also asked about Tim and Peter.
Right.
If they, if we had renewed them. And I don't, I don't, I don't show what.
And, and the answer was that I talked to Carl, Carl called me after that, and I told him that Peter Coffin had, Peter Coffin had already told us she wouldn't, since then we have, we have reappointed him, and Tim Icardi had not responded. And again, I waited, and I was told by the town clerk that she had had a conversation with him, and that he wanted to be reappointed to the, as the.
You know what? Can we just settle this right now?
Nope. I'm not gonna, if he wants, he can send an email. We're just gonna.
You don't want me to call and ask him just to see if he says no?
I don't.
And then it would go your way, right?
No, what I want him to do is have him send an email and we'll deal with it in two weeks. Because obviously I'm not, I don't want to put somebody on the spot, trying to do it like we did for everybody else. So.
So I, I mean, I'm in favor of, at this point, I would be interested in hearing what Tim Icardi says, whether he wants to be reappointed. And then I would be interested in, in considering that second appointment in, after the 45 days have passed. So I don't know if it would be helpful for me to rescind my, my motion, or if we should vote on it and then bring it back up once we have that information, once the time has passed.
I'm, well, if you, if you would draw your motion, we'll just table it for two weeks.
Okay. Well, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. All right.
So just a comment, you know, this discussion, and I mean, I think one thing that I would like to see, and I think, Mike, you probably are driving this, is sort of codifying and drawing a little more formality.
Right.
To the town's operations, the town's processes. So when you, if you, if you get a email saying, do you want to continue your, your, your work on a committee? Please respond. I mean.
Well, that was done. That was done.
My point is like, if you don't respond, you should not assume that it's just, well, you know, I'll just tell them later. It's, I think we want to try to formalize a lot of this.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
If he didn't send it, then he didn't send it.
No, no.
I had multiple conversations with him.
Right, right.
But I think. Well, let's be, let's, let's just be clear. We have an admin, and that's what she does. And she sent multiple emails.
If I could just, just finish my point, I'm sorry. I just want to say is, these types of changes are gonna take time because we've done business a certain way.
Right.
We want to.
Well, no, I, I know.
And, and I just think to your point.
Mike's saying too, we, this is not something new.
Let's give Tim a, a shot, you know, out of respect for the time he served. Give him a shot to say yes or no. But things are changing, and things will continue to change. And these are growing pains, so.
And I think, I mean, communicating with the chair of the boards when there has been a, like, an appointment where somebody hasn't replied, to let them know so that they can continue the conversation.
And again, and I would say again, that we did that, and in fairness, Carl is, is a new chair, and he's done a, a great job, I think, to this point. He and I have communicated. Again, our admin has, but we have a lot of people that, look, we have some folks that still haven't done ethics training, right? And I was firm that we were not gonna reappoint anybody who hadn't done it, all right? And granted, there are some, and there are some still, that I have said that they've done it, but they haven't turned it in yet. And, you know, it's at a point where we have got to just.
The good news on that is that new program that's coming out from the state is now we're gonna be, you take it once and it notifies all the communities. So everybody, it, it's not, this right now, it's.
Right.
You take it and then it's up to you to turn in that, that to every community that you might do business with, work with, right? Excuse me. So that's the, that new software, hopefully it's coming out in the next month, we'll take care of all that.
I think the types of things you're talking about, about changes are really not that big a deal. They're really just minor refinements to your policy. And I think, you know, putting in how someone must respond, I think those are all infinitely things that can be easily taken care of going forward.
Well, change is hard. All right, I am gonna, but I am going to talk about number nine. The motion on here is to appoint somebody to that open position. And Bob Sweet, this is the second time that he's approached one of these positions. And I realize, and we have had a vacant position posted since August thirty-first. Admittedly, it's not the one of the guy who resigned on September seventh. But I also think he's been here every week, and I think it would be appropriate. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to appoint him to the unexpired term, the two-year unexpired term, and then we'll deal with, because we have somebody else who could step into the other one if Tim Icardi doesn't want to be reappointed, but we're going to reach out to him, see if he does.
But that's the one that we haven't hit the forty-five days yet?
Well, right. But again, that's not a hard and fast rule, it's a.
No, I understand, but then rescind the policy, why do we have a policy?
All right, well, then, is that the motion you want to make is to rescind that policy?
Wait, can I just interrupt for a minute? I think policies, when it comes to this type of administrative routine type of activity is a good thing. I think that you have a policy that is a pretty good one, is great. I think refinements to it based on evolution are helpful. I'm not a fan of suspending existing policies. If there, unless there's a real reason that you're going to get rid of the policy because you think the policy itself is a bad policy and you want a different policy. But to suspend a policy, I do not ever recommend that a board or a commission suspend their own policies unless it's because they want to completely change or do away with what that policy says.
If that's the point, all right, well, if that's the point, then we have someone, we have a position that should have been reappointed on July one. That person hadn't done their ethics training, hadn't turned it in. They were asked repeatedly in emails, admittedly not one pointed, but they haven't responded. And now we've removed that motion because we thought it was a good idea to wait, but yet, so what we're doing is we're not following our policy. So you're saying that there's some policies we should follow and some that we don't?
Well, I don't know that you're not following the policy because it's not like it says you wait forty-five days and you're just because you want to do something quicker waving the whole campaign.
Counselor, that's not what I said. The policy was that the reappearance to be made on July first, it is now the middle of October. And that position is still not.
We haven't made, there's a slew of.
Right.
Appointments we haven't done on July first.
Well, not, the ones we haven't appointed are the ones who hadn't done their ethics, right? And everyone else that we've appointed are people who have said they wanted to be reappointed and answered the email, and they did their ethics. And you're right, there are some we haven't reappointed because we gave them some time, but we have one, well. All right, you know what, I'm not gonna, and again, I apologize to the Board for wasting everybody's time so much. But I'm gonna move off of this, and I'm gonna go to number ten, which is.
This is actually a good discussion.
Well, it is a good discussion.
So, I mean, that's not a waste of time. I apologize to Mr. Sweet, because I think you've been to a couple meetings, as Mike said, but I also think we can clean this up in the next meeting on all counts, correct?
Right, it'll be.
But I mean, this is, I mean, with all due respect, I think Town Council said that these are small, minor things we're talking about. These are actually, to initiate these type of operational changes is actually extremely difficult because everybody has to abide by them. So making the statement and changing the policy is easy. Executing and implementing is a lot harder, change management's tough. These types of conversations are going to happen as we move forward, I guarantee it. And this is a healthy discussion.
And I want to especially make a point that I do appreciate everyone who has served for years. And if there's anybody who wants to be reappointed, they just, they need to follow the process. And I don't want to insult anybody, I don't want to remove anybody who doesn't want to be, who doesn't want to be removed. I want to appoint people who want to stay on there, but if, it's just the need to respond. So.
I just want to verify that I agree that the conversations are important and are good for the board to have. And I didn't mean that it's easy to come to, I just meant, once you come to a decision, putting it into the policy, it is not, it's not difficult. But I agree that the board is able to have these conversations. I'll go unmute myself now.
I move to make the following one-year appointments for a term that will expire June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Building Commissioner John Erickson, CMRPC, and CMRPC Planning Rep Bill Ambrosino.
There's a second, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I move to make the following three-year appointments for a term that will expire June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Historical District Committee Ruth O'Grady, Historical District Committee Janice Muldoon-Moors.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We've already discussed the ethics training. We've discussed about vacant Board and Committee positions, we're tabling this, we've already discussed fourteen, so let's go to fifteen. Consider vote, intention to lay out a roadway, Applewood Lane, Brookview Lane, Willowbrook Lane. I will tell you that I did talk to Alan Taitrow, the Highway Surveyor, and he said that far as he's concerned, they're all set to go, and that he asked that the Board make motions for all three of these because we have to approve these before they can actually go on the warrant.
Can I, can we just make this as one with all three of the names in it, or do you want me to separate them?
Absolutely.
I move to, I move the Men and Select Board on its own initiative upon the recommendation of the Highway Surveyor Alan Taitrow and Planner Jack Hunter. Sorry, Cindy just put her hand up, did you want me to?
You.
You're muted.
I had said, sent some revised motions to Lorac today, and it's my recommendation, just because there may not be consistency, that you vote each one independently.
Okay, fine, I'll do that. I'm, okay, I move the Men and Select Board on its own initiative upon the recommendation of the Highway Surveyor Alan Taitrow and Planner Jack Hunter, vote its intent to lay out Applewood Lane as a townway. It is in the opinion of the Select Board that the common convenience and necessity require the laying out of townways at these locations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move the, I move the Men and Select Board on its own initiative upon the recommendation of the Highway Surveyor Alan Taitrow and Planner Jack Hunter, vote its intent to lay out Brookview Lane as a townway. It's in the opinion of the Select Board that common convenience and necessity require the laying out of townways at these locations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move the Men and Select Board on its own initiative upon the recommendation of the Highway Surveyor Alan Taitrow and Planner Jack Hunter, vote its intent to lay out Willowbrook Lane as townway. It's in the opinion of the Select Board that the common convenience and necessity require the laying out of townways at these locations.
Second. Motion made in second, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Consider signing the state election warrant.
I saw this in an email.
Yeah.
And I feel like there's one missing, is question two missing? It was missing on the email, I should say.
Well, I think, again, the motion is to sign the November eighth, twenty twenty-two state election warrant for twenty twenty-two. So what we're doing is making a motion to sign the warrant.
Okay.
So we don't have to sign it yet, we'll make sure it's correct, we just make a motion to sign it.
Well, I was just wondering if like question two got pulled or something? Because it was in, did you get that thing in the mail?
Yeah.
One of them was missing.
Well, actually, there's one, there is one, there is one question, it might be the second one, that although they got the signatures and did everything in time, they did not have the language submitted in time to make it into that book.
They missed the printing deadline.
They missed the printing deadline, but it's still going to be on the ballot.
Oh, no, I saw it in the book, I.
Well, there is, but there is a third one, there is one question that missed the printing deadline, and I don't remember what it is, but there is one that missed the printing deadline that is going to be on the warrant.
Okay, yeah, so just what came from the state to Ellen is question one and question three, whatever that means.
Right.
And if that's the ballot, that's the ballot. Those are the questions for the ballot. I wonder if they're just kicking it to the next one. Anyway.
I move to sign the November eighth, twenty twenty-two state election warrant for twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, now let's review the special town meeting warrant.
Okay. I printed out copies because I started reviewing the draft today. Cindy, I sent you one over late, too, I started cleaning it up so we can actually get down to the real numbers. Let me just pull up, I started also looking at the actual numbers today. So Article one, and over bills of a prior year. Article two is contractual salary increases that were passed at the end of last year. Stabilization is three, capex is four, OPEB is five, sealer weights of measure is six, the shared fire chief agreement is seven. Two, we have two planning agreements, so Cindy, I wanted to ask you this because I consolidated these into two, from two into one article. We have two grants in which we require a match. So I have to, so can I put them both as one? Because they're both planning grants, or do I need two articles? Wait, you're muted, you're muted.
The reason, I mean, you can do it as one article and I would do two motions.
Okay, just specify in the motion.
Right, because then in case there's a dispute, you could get a yes on one, you know, get a yes on both, but you can have them in two articles, one article, two motions.
Right, in both cases, they're, we're contractually obligated to pay because we already agreed to the grant part. So basically, just allocating the funding piece.
Then, I mean, you can do them, there's nothing that says you can't do them as one, as long as you're confident that it's caused the demise of the other.
Okay, the library is on here at eight, the senior center is at ten, three-fiftieth transfer is eleven, twelve is the Alpove Design Area in the back. I did hear back from that contractor, he's going to be sending me something this week. This is that small piece of property that, near the suites, that we're trying to get a price on. Ted Steves is here, the tree warden, I met with him this week, he needs funding for his budget, so he's here to speak on that. Want to come up, you can. Yeah, right now.
Please do.
Sorry, fourteen.
Thanks.
Okay, what can I? What should I say?
So, so Ted told me that there was a, basically a bill of a prior year that he ended up having to pay out of FY twenty-three this year. So that's about twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah, just shy of twelve.
So he wants at least the twelve thousand back to go into his operating budget, that's understandable. And then maybe he's got, needs another twenty-five or so traditional tree work that he'd like to do if possible.
Twenty-five thousand or twenty-five hundred?
Thousand.
Thousand. We had a debate a little bit, and I did talk to Alan about it today. He says that he paid the police details out of the tree warden's budget. He's going to provide me with some more documentation.
Okay, this is news to me.
My, my thought was, and having discussed it with Ted, and then thinking about Alan's budget, is he's sort of had the luxury the last couple of years of being able to use his highway detail line to help supplement the tree budget. And now that they're separate, and it's pricey for detail, like maybe we need to revisit how much that budget actually is, and that they're, we're sort of funding from the right place.
Would that entail moving funds from highway detail in Alan's budget to the forestry account?
In theory, but Alan says that he didn't do that, he didn't pay for tree details. So I'd have to take a look at the numbers to see for sure.
Okay, so there's a lot of moving parts here. Like Kim said, first of all, there was a snafu on the date of the invoice, and I lost that twelve thousand dollars that we had left over from twenty-two, which I'd like to recoup because anybody who's driven around the towns of this, the towns of this street, the streets of this town know that we have a lot of dead trees still to deal with. I think we're going through a historically unprecedented time right now because, and Alan did a good job getting rid of a lot of the oak trees, right? We just got through the gypsy moth pandemic. And now we're suffering from the emerald ash borer, which is killing all our ash trees. I mean, you go down Millville Road, or Washington Street, or Blackstone, I mean, they're everywhere. So we're going to run out of money long before we run out of dead trees. So I see that, and we're probably, if we include the twelve K that we spent, which should have been last year's money on this year, plus we've done some days since then, we're approaching twenty-five K, and I, I just see bad moon rising, right? So I'm just trying to be proactive. I will be honest with you, I, I would like to be a little aggressive on getting caught up with the dead trees. They are a hazard, they endanger everybody who travels on our roads, and it's a real threat. So we got to get them dealt with. Now, that's easier said than done, I like our contractor, Bob Gargan's great. I've been in the industry for forty years, and he gives us a good bang for the buck. He, he's very thoughtful about it, we talk about the trees, we prioritize. I want to get him in for at least another handful of days before the snow flies. And that's going to probably eat up in the neighborhood of another twenty. So I'll be coming into the winter, as it stands right now, with kind of no money left. Unless we can get that twelve K back, and I'm asking for more, but I mean, it's just a wish list.
But I mean, it's a fair wish list.
I think so, I don't want to be, I mean, I could pick a number. We could throw a hundred thousand dollars at the thing, but listen, I pay taxes in this town, I don't want to spend a dime more than we have to. But right now, I feel compelled to get a little caught up because we're behind the eight ball, there's just too many, there's too many dead trees on the road. So, and I'm pushing them, but I gotta, I gotta wait in line, we gotta wait in line like everybody else, so. But we have a good relationship, I inherited a good guy there, Alan did a good job, but we're still playing catch-up. Like I said, this is unprecedented, we've never seen a tree die off like this. I mean, in my lifetime, I've never seen this before, the emerald ash came right on top of the gypsy moths, and we're just, we're just playing catch-up, that's all. Can I answer any questions?
Just maybe, I'm not sure, to either Kim or yourself, just in terms of the current budget for this fiscal year, you front-run that budget and you deplete it by end of this calendar year. I mean, you said you'd have zero unless you get twelve grand back.
No, no, we're not out of money.
No, 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 so my point is, in terms of the type of work you want to get done, can we front-load the work to mitigate the risk you're describing sooner than later? And then look at future funding and figure out what come, what we need to do in the latter half of the fiscal year, you know what I mean? So I wouldn't want you to.
I think I understand what you're saying.
Work because you're going to run out of money for the fiscal year. I'd rather you be aggressive, mitigate the risk, front-run your budget, rather than trying to make.
Okay, I think I understand what you're saying, I want to press forward, I want to, I want to be aggressive on it because the trees are not going to get better. They're just going to become more of a liability as time goes by. So, and the other thing I've got in the back of my mind is, you know, winter's coming, and they're saying it could be a bad one. And Kim and I talked about, you know, catastrophic events, and there's money to be had if we have a major hurricane or something like that, and I understand. But just a pasty snow or ice storm or something, and the more trees we have gone, the better off we'll be going in, right? And then with the detail, this is another, like I said, a lot of moving parts. So the details chew up a chunk of the budget. Because on a day, let's say he brings the crane in, he gets thirty-six hundred dollars a day for a crane, crew, seventy-five-foot bucket, log loader. Sounds like a lot of money, but it's actually a really good deal. And if he does two or three major removals in that time, which he can do, it's well worth it. But now you add on a four hundred dollar detail. So every time, every day we have him, whether it's twenty-five hundred bucks for the bucket truck or thirty-six for the bucket with the crane, it's four hundred bucks, four hundred bucks, give or take. I mean, because that rate changes depending on who is on, is on detail that day, and that's all police department stuff, based on who gets the call and so on. But it's usually within probably seventy-five bucks one way or the other, or four hundred. And that's all police department stuff based on who gets the call and so on. But it's usually within probably 75 bucks one way or the other of 400. But that's a big percentage, so it adds up. Because if I want to do another, say, half dozen days between now and Christmas, well, that's another, you know, 2,500 bucks right off the top for, for detail.
Do you have an idea where, what you want to target between now and Christmas if you had your, you know, wish list to use your
If I had my druthers, I'd like to get about 10 days in, but we won't get them that many times.
Well, but, but where would you be targeting, I guess? Do you have that laid out and you know?
Yeah, we have priorities. Yeah, we're, we're hitting right now, we're hitting hard Millville Road and we've got more on Providence and Blackstone's almost done. Some on Washington, they're, they're all over, you know?
I mean, I feel like the, the bills of a prior year is a bill of a prior year. We have to reinstate that just because it didn't go through that process if it wasn't.
I mean, that was my, that was, that was my bad because I, I did not communicate to Bob the, the importance of dating. The, the work was done prior to, to July. But he dated the invoice for 11/9 or whatever it was, July 10th or something. It was just after the cutoff. It was just a snafu. So, so I just felt like
To pay him.
Right, yeah, that's fine.
Well, we're going to have a conversation when I get to the end of this warrant about our actual financial position.
I was going to ask you, do we have like the numbers to share to understand?
Some estimates.
Okay.
So we'll have a better idea of what we're really dealing with here.
Okay.
And what is really going to get funded and what is, you know?
But the answer is we don't, we don't know yet. There's just, everything is estimates.
Yeah, but like that's, but I, I think this is something that we can prioritize. I think at least reinstate the money. It isn't that much.
The 12 and 25 is open question.
And maybe we will to get lucky.
So, yeah, I'll take what I can get, but it's hard to know exactly how much money you need to do. You know, we, we have a wish list. Okay, these, we're focusing on these next 10 trees. Well, he might do two in a day for 2,500 bucks because he doesn't need the crane. Or he might do four, you know, it ranges. But I mean, some of them are, some of them are easy breezy, but most of them are involved. And a lot, and they all, and every time we're on the road, we got, we need a police detail. So that just chews away at that funding.
Yeah, I'll be honest, it's kind of like, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, no, I just have a question about, like, there's one article and, but then there are two funding questions, right? There's the one is about the recouping the 12,000 and then there's possible additional. So is that going to be like two motions or one motion that
So there's both. There's two ways to go with any request that's anything like this for a budget. So it's either, we're thinking about, normally we wouldn't fund one-time projects, right? We'd use special articles of one-time money and we could say that. We could say that this certain amount of tree work that he's going to do, that he knows he's going to do, it's worth 20,000 and goes in a special article and then it's not tied to a fiscal year and he can use it whenever he wants. Or like the 12,000 from his operating, we could just put the money in his operating budget and it all goes together. So it'd just be one amount we transfer in. I mean, either way, like the 12,000 he didn't spend, it falls to free cash, right? That's the whole cycle. I mean, assuming, you know, we have free cash available, right? So that's, either way is fine. I, but I do think we have to take a closer look at the detail stuff, particularly around your budget for this next year.
That's a big, that's a, that's a, that's a concern because that just chews up too much of my funding. Now, I want to say, going forward, 50 grand for a yearly budget is, is not that inadequate. It's just that right now, we're really behind the eight ball because of the, because of the Emerald Dash Bore and the Gypsy Moth. We just are. So that's why I'm going for the extra funding. Give it to me, don't give it to me. I'll do what I can with what we have.
One, one thing I would ask, I think looking towards the next fiscal year in general, but just similar to sort of the highway work that was done, just your view of what is needed to be done across the town, regardless, what's the work needs to get done as opposed to when it gets done, right? So you could, we could start to put more of a plan together and possibly you could do one-time funding potentially, you know, to do a bulk of work. Maybe not before winter, but maybe we plan it into spring, summer, et cetera, and do something at the ATM. But the more you can inform, I'll say me, but I'm, I'll say the board of what all the work is and what situation we're in. As you describe, it sort of seems dire. I would love to understand that, you know, Millville Road is this.
Are you looking for the number of trees and where they're located?
However, however you would gauge the work that needs to be done, think project management-wise, if it's by street, by street, if it's number of trees by street, however you, I'm not sure how you do what you do to kind of engage the gentleman that comes in with the truck. But what, however you do that to size it would be the only way we could start to understand what the magnitude of cost would be. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'll tell you what I do. I drive around. I look at the trees. I see them. And I also field phone calls. So it's not just dead trees. Sometimes I get calls from residents who can't see coming out of their driveway. I have one very kind of irate resident on Maori who's, who's got two trees flanking his driveway. He cannot see up and down the street. They're live trees. They're town trees. They're outside the wall. We'll talk about that in a second. Yeah, I'd love to take them down for him, but I mean, it's, it's not really priority as far as the town wide because they, they're alive. So they're not, they're not going to come down in a storm like a dead tree might. But to that household, they're dire because you've got, if you have a teenage driver trying to get out in the road and they can't see down the street until they know their car is halfway out in the road, that's a situation. So there's a lot going on. That's a wish list thing. That's a like, okay, you know, in a perfect
Right, right. I'm more about risk mitigation.
Yeah, so we go for the dead stuff. We're going, and then we're not even talking about pruning. Because there's a lot of dead limbs over the road. Well, it'd be nice to just go to, go up and down the streets with a bucket truck and a detail and just cut down dead limbs. We're not at that point yet. We're, we're, right now, we're going for the big fish. We're going for big dead trees.
So outline the big fish across town would be what I'd be looking for, especially we're looking to fund, increase funding. So understand where, where's that money going and where are we focusing?
I can drive around and get you some numbers.
Yeah, just, just an idea because you eventually are going to have to give the gentleman that does the work an idea of what he's coming into, right?
We drive around.
Right.
We, and, and we talk about it. We talk about, okay, this tree is a real problem because you see stuff. They're cracked, there's holes, there's, sometimes the bases are compromised, you know, good storm, this is on the road. Now, we're not a, we're not liable for anything over the wires. So that entire side of the street, we don't deal with. So I'm fighting with, not fighting, I'm talking with National Grid, good people there, but they're stretched. They cover counties, you know, they've probably got a dozen crews, but they're covering half the state. So I mean, to get them in there, they're good people and I've walked, I've driven around with some of them. And I give them poll numbers and I, and I, because people call me, say, oh, I've got a, there's a dead tree over the, over a wire in front of my house. And they're concerned. They're afraid of losing power. They're afraid, we can't do that. That's grid. So I'm trying to be an advocate for the town and get on their case a little bit about, hey, and I mean, I'm doing what I can do there, but ultimately that's kind of them. We're doing what we can do on our side of the street. So really, we're only responsible for our side of the road, you know, which is nice. But I've just got a call from Dan Vire. He's got park trees that are dead. So that adds to the list. We got to deal with those. There's a dead tree, a, a, a problem tree behind the library. It's going to have to be dealt with. I, I saw it today. It's an issue. It's compromised. It's, it's going to go. I don't think it's going to fall in the building, but it'd fall on a car. So there's a lot of stuff out there. I just feel like
And all the, and all of the trees on the, on the public lands, on the town lands is your responsibility, right?
Right.
So anything on the parks is in parks. It's the tree ward. Same thing with the cemeteries, same thing with, well, some of them are privately owned, right, by us, by nonprofits. But, but behind the library would be town-owned land, so that would be your responsibility as well.
On that score, the town beach had a lot of tree work done, but there's four live trees. They want to take two of them down because they want to rehab the wall, retaining wall. So it's just, it goes on. I, I, I will make a list. And I can guesstimate time-wise because I have a good, because that's what I do, a good sense of how long it's going to take and what's, you know, if it needs a crane or this or that. I mean, it's a guesstimate. It's all guesstimate. But yeah.
Every good project starts with a guesstimate.
We do our best.
And we refine it, don't we? Yeah.
But so far, so good. You know, we've made some progress, but we've a long way to go.
Cool. Thank you.
Good problem.
So let me, let me circle back then on the financial sense. Why not? So we, I'm sure you all saw that email about excess levy, right? That's additional money that we're allowed to capture, right? So there's $84,000 that we have there. We're looking at a really small year on free cash. The current estimate is about $200,000. Okay, so that's 284 total from now until the end of the year, okay? We already have $123,000 contractually obligated to things that we already approved. You know, raises, grants, IMAs. So those things are getting funded first, right? And so it doesn't leave much room for everything else that's requested. So it certainly doesn't leave a lot of money for what we normally put in, 250 in stabilization, 100 in CapEx, 25 in OPEB. That's, it's not that kind of year. This is a year where we're supplementing budgets here and there and, you know, getting to the end of the year and seeing where we're at. So that being said, I, I just want to go back to Article 2 for a minute just to get clarification because I think I heard something at a previous meeting, but we've never actually talked about it, so I want to be sure. We passed COLIS at the end of last fiscal year. That was for all employees, non-union contractual, everybody got a bump. What that did not include is elected. So the town clerk and the highway surveyor. And I'm pretty sure I heard you talk about it at a previous meeting and say, yes, sort of, of course. But I just want to make sure because that's something that has to be voted on independently. It can be part of that article, but they get voted on independently.
We went through this the week when you were traveling back, when I first went through the warrant. And I explained that to everybody, that Article 2 involved giving the town clerk and the highway, the highway surveyor, the, the 2% that we had given to everybody else.
Because the rest will be grouped as like salary lines, but those will be individual, okay? Just needed clarification on that. All right, going back down. I wasn't here either for the library. But let me just go, the, for the Shared Fire Chief Agreement, we had talked at one time about transferring money from dispatch, which I still believe we're going to do, but we might also need to supplement that with a transfer, but that's transfer. The planning grants that I've been talking about, one of them is a $20,000 match for 25% that we got from CM, the Planning Board got from CMRPC for some other grant that we didn't know about at the time for the budget, otherwise it would have been in the budget already. The other one is the existing IMA that I have been updating with Millville and Uxbridge for the planners, the full-time planner, the grant that we recently I'm on Article, it's going to be Article 8. So we, the state fully funded the first year. Now we're in the second year. I do, I always have about 40,000 in planning. It's not enough to cover both that extra 20 plus the, the rest our share. So right now, I'm estimating that's about $58,000 to cover both of those two things. Library, I don't know, I don't have the numbers on that. I'm sure there's an email, but I didn't, I don't have that. Same thing with the senior center. That's, it was a placeholder for possible. 350th, that's a transfer, so that's no big deal. Town Hall, Alcove, same thing. I have no idea on that number. Tree Warden, I put in 37,000 for now.
I'm sorry, just jumping. The, I'm thinking about the numbers, the 123 that's already designated
Yep.
That you started with out of the 284, did that include the 58 that you just mentioned?
Yes.
Okay. So it'll be important because I'm doing math in my head. A spreadsheet would be good.
Not on the spreadsheet. The only thing it doesn't, of, of the things I just talked about, the, the chief is the only transfer one. So it's those, that, that 123 is all those raises and all the contracts and all the
If you get to something that's not in the 123 that just pointed out, no?
Fine. Like stabilization, I put 100,000 as a placeholder. Obviously, that's not going to happen. 50,000 for free cash, you know, for CapEx. Who knows? Waits and measures, 1,500. I think you heard about that at the meeting. Tree Warden. And then, so Parks Facility, same thing. That was a placeholder that I put. I don't even have a number for what that would be at this point, but it's a concept. Yep.
Can that come out of CPA?
It depends on what it is. I basically just put it as, we've been talking about, look again at Parks Facility. That's as far as I've gone.
I had, I had discussed that with Ann and that's, that's the answer, Lonnie, that it depends.
Okay.
Right?
So for these articles I want to talk about for highway, I
Just one question. Do we need to put that question back to CPC to discuss? If we intend to try to get an answer on CPA funds?
Well, the answer is it's, it's already in the works, but we have to get, we have to define it further.
But, but it would be in the works with that committee to
Yeah, Dan, Dan needs to send over what it, you know, or, or I shouldn't say Dan, maybe we, it's
Same, well, and same with if there's going to be ADA components with the, but that's more of a May funding, but it's a
Yeah. But the issue, but the issue is, these are all things to be voted on, on this. It would go to the townspeople. But it's already been, I, I've already discussed it with Ann and Dan because
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's with the right committee because if it's CPC, they've got to vote on it and
The two places is either them or us.
Yep.
So we've got a, you know, it's, you know, the warrant is established now, right? So, you know, we've got, and then of course, once we come up with the numbers, we're going to put it in front of the, the, the finance committee to approve it, right? But, but the answer is when I, when I brought it up, you know, the answer I got is depends. So we're
So, so a question on this warrant in general. As a board, are we going to take a position on all these articles? So if we're asked on the floor, as a board, will we have voted to either support or not support? I mean, they're not all our articles, but I think sometimes we do get asked.
You bring up a good point.
Yeah.
Traditionally, it was always that the, the select board, all right, it, they are our articles. So if they're on, if they're on here and you can see they're actually identified, if you look through them, every one of these that has BOs, that's, that's us. So every one of these, we will, one or two things going to happen. We're either going to take ownership and, and read these or we're going to pass over them. Every one of them will be, will be, will ask for a recommendation from the, you know, from finance. At one point, just because of the, the makeup of the boards, when I was the finance chair, I started reading a lot of the things and making the recommendation both. But what's going to happen is every one of these that has BOs, we have to, we have, we do have ownership of it and we will, if it stays on here, you know, and we don't pass over it, then that means we're recommending it and finance is going to have to
So I just want to make sure that we, as all members of the board, if it's on here with BOs, we are implicitly behind the, the warrant. But we've never actually said are we for or against it as a board. Does that make sense? It's just there because we're reviewing articles. But I, I've been at a town meeting. I've been on the board when the board has been asked, what does the board think about this? And the board never actually discussed or voted on whether we formally approved it more individually, you know, we might have, you know what I mean?
Well, just so we're clear, that's what we're doing right now.
Okay.
And I know one thing for at least Lonnie and I, if either one of us ever has had an issue, we speak up and say something about it. And I think it's a, but you make a great point. If there's anybody who has an issue with any of these as we're going through this, and you'll see, we've gone through it multiple times and we will keep going through it. Please speak up and ask questions. And of course, Kim is, and, and a lot of it, it's in flux because we just, you know, the timing. As a matter of fact, Kim and I were talking about this earlier today. Because of the timing with the Division of Local Services and when they actually come up with certified free cash and all the numbers that they do, you know, we may want to consider, we traditionally pick this fall special town meeting. We might want to massage the dates so that we actually have ourselves more time between when the money's certified and how we decide to spend it. But that all, and as you and I have discussed, you know, we have these, we have the, the Department of Local Services making recommendations. And all of this is going to, we're going to have as a, as a group, we're going to discuss this to, to more formalize in kind of a standard operating procedure of how we've been doing things.
So that's, to that point, Article 9, the library article, I just don't have enough information on it to understand whether I'm forward or against it yet. So I just want to put a little asterisk there because I'm not necessarily on board with
So I was, I was going to say the same thing of what Mike was going to say. Traditionally, at this point in the review, we are pulling articles.
Right.
But it's hard to tell because we don't know if there's any funding even available. But we have in the past said, okay, like just, let's not use the financial one for a minute, but like, we already talked about and I put them back on here for you to pull them off. I put on, remove the cap on CapEx, right? Because we talked about it, fully knowing that we said we should do that in May. That's for a decision for you guys to make. You say you'll do it in May, we cross it off. That's what we're doing here, right? Just because someone has submitted, Cindy will cringe, but just because someone has submitted an article to us Just because someone has submitted, Cindy will cringe, but just because someone has submitted an article to us does not mean it has to continue on in the process. These are requests that they are making. Now, if they come from outside boards, we put them on. We certainly try to consider everything that comes in.
Yes, but the, the warrant is closed. So what's on here is on here. So when I say that, what it means is, at the meeting, we're going to pass over it. Everything that's on here is going to remain on here, but we may vote to pass over it. This one with the library, if you remember, the, you know, the, the library director came in here a couple of weeks ago and discussed with us why he wanted these additional hours and why he needed them and where, you know, where they were at and how it could cut back and how things are. So, but it's still.
We can still cut.
Right.
We can still pull today.
Right. And that's a great example because I know I was remote, but there were questions on the information provided. Or I have them. I actually haven't seen it, but we never actually said as a board, we support increasing the operational hours of the library from a budget perspective. And I think that's an affirmative action we need to take.
And in my, my calculation of this, the reason I didn't ask for that then, because we don't know if we have the option.
Correct.
But there is going to be, but you are absolutely right.
Yeah.
We're, once we get these numbers, we are going to go through this article by article by article. And we are going to make a recommendation of whether we want to pass over this or send it to the, to the Finance Committee for a recommendation. And we're going to have an explanation of how much money we have and what.
Any of the sources, right?
And the sources have to be.
For instance, Ted's need for money, I, it's quote operational, but that's one time. I could, I would, I would push to go to stabilization if our free cash is low to potentially fund, you know, increased pruning or tree.
Well, removal. Thank you. And I realize that's an example, but again, it's a matter of us recommending a funding source, going to the Finance Committee, making the case to them whether they support it or not, and then actually going to the floor.
Yep.
And again, doing it to them. But this is the, this is the dance that we do, we've done.
We've probably got about three meetings, three, three meetings now and four meetings.
Well, let's realistically think about the timeframe. When we find out, when we actually find out we have free cash, it's going to be days before the meeting. It's not going to be weeks before. And we moved the meeting up one week this year. We moved it up last year. We have been getting it done and certified quicker, but it is a tight turnaround. And we have had years where it just, we wasn't going to be done in time and we had to pass over the financial articles. Hopefully, that's not the case, but we always have to be prepared for that. The problem is, when we start to have our joint meet, I have to tell the FinCom to start meeting too, to review these, to recommend a funding source, and there is no funding source, right? And so that adds to the frustration of it's hypothetical. Everything is hypothetical up until the 11th hour.
That, that's life. We know what we, we know what we submitted to be certified for free cash. It may not be certified, but we've got a ballpark estimate of what dollars we might reasonably expect to be certified. We can all move on with our jobs to kind of figure out what the right place to go is because, for instance, using stabilization to, to provide $25,000 more to an operating budget, because it's one time, we don't need somebody to certify free cash to say that's a reasonable action to take, right?
Correct.
So.
But, but again, but, but in the big picture, we're not at that point yet where we have to make that decision.
No, I just feel like we're getting close.
I, I agree. No, I agree. That's why we're having the discussion.
So one of the things that is unusual that's on here, so typically in the past, before previous years, I would have already vetted all of these financial articles with the departments. That did not happen this year and it didn't really happen last year. So it's a bit unorthodox. So for instance, and I've talked about this before with Highway. So there's a bunch of requests in here from things from Highway with the funding source that are already here as they were submitted by the department. Obviously, we need to edit that because they can dictate the funding source and we need to remove the dollar amounts because we're not that specific on the printed warrant. But in addition to that, right, these are operational requests for a budget that hasn't actually been considered against something as an increase like the library budget. These are operational requests. And I'm not saying that they shouldn't be funded, but they need to be considered as part of a bigger picture of what we're choosing to fund with whatever funding we actually have. And what concerns me when I look at something like this is Article 22, which says this 24-8 from free cash to fund this stormwater management program assistance. I already funded that. That's already in the budget right now. It was already funded. So I worry that things like this happen when we're not actually following our processes.
I'm, I'm not sure that's accurate because I was on a call, I think Lonnie, maybe you were too, with, with Stormwater Management from the, from the state in Allen. And I thought, okay, I thought there was, I thought this was additional money.
No, it is in addition to their request from last year. It's up to like 44,000. If this is the exact.
I would just, I would just have you follow up with them.
Okay.
Because.
So it would be, even if, let's say it's right, it's correct or incorrect, the fact that we're here at this point and we don't know the answer to it is not okay in terms of a budgeting process. And so that has to be resolved. And that's, this isn't something that I'd want to see any of these go to the floor like this.
They won't.
Well, yeah, I.
I'm not sure. I understand what you're saying, but my question is, why don't we know the answer yet? Because I've heard this brought up two meetings ago. Is it, do we need to, is there a, is there an answer you're not getting?
Well, so the, I went, when I saw this number last time, what I did was go back and check the budget to see if it was actually budgeted. And it was in there. And so I thought this is one that we're pulling off tonight because it's already been funded, right? But if there's a question.
I would double check with, and I'm sure I have an email in there that I thought you were copied on after the fact.
So your, your greater concern, Kim, if I'm hearing you right, is that there are things on here that we got to this point maybe out of process, to use your words, and there's some things you feel are going to need to be removed or reworded.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure, and that we are in the draft phase still, but because we're sort of remaking the process, I want to, like, to your point about, is everything going on like this? Or is, this is, we need to be pulling things too, right? Or putting more on, like, well, the warrant's closed now. So I just don't want to have us go to the floor passing over 10 articles when we didn't have to, you know? Like, let's keep it concise. Let's keep it neat. Let's keep it organized so that we are, you know, presenting the best possible option.
I just sent you the email from this, Gabrielle Delphite. There's a stormwater task force meeting, so you can follow.
Gabrielle.
I just wanted to be accurate. If I pass over 10 articles as an example, I'm less concerned with that for the right reasons, right? But I understand your, the optics may not be great, right?
Right.
So, cool. Thank you.
Okay, so same thing, well, this is CPA, this one CPA, CPA, CPA. Historic district, historic district, historic district. Article 30 is changing the date of the town meeting. This is another one that I just put on there. We'd have to change these two sections just to give you an idea of what I'm talking about, right? And how that would happen. Then we have a road acceptance for the ones you did tonight. And then I added, 35 got added because we have a lease agreement from Clough and Cindy advises me that we need to bring it to town meeting. Go ahead, Cindy. Tell me why.
Is it muted? Is it just Clough or is it all?
It's just Clough.
This one is just Clough. Because we have a lease agreement with them that need to be renewed.
And this goes all set.
You're muted. Cindy, you're muted.
I need to speak about this. Section three, the, the way it's worded, I don't like. I don't know what the original town meeting vote was for this. But I take the original town meeting vote back that after I've seen the agreement, I may have complained. But at any rate, it's a new lease agreement. The disposition of land and that goes with town meeting. The fact that it's land and thing, and is this school committee property or town property?
I think it's, it's listed in tax records as the town amending, but I don't know if that means anything.
I think the town owns each school.
Yeah, the town's own the respective schools in their community.
I guess my question is, a lot of time, the school property in a given town, forget about the district, is under the care, custody, control of the school committee versus the town? I just don't know about this particular property. So I'm not sure whether, but I think you need a town meeting voting minimum because you're putting something new in.
This is the right email. There's nothing in here.
And I don't like the language about how it comes to pass again. Because you can't really have the school district determine whether or not you're going to lease it for another 20 years. The town has to do that. But that's a minor change in the agreement in my mind, but the bigger thing is, I do not know how you authorize the disposition of land without a town meeting vote. That's all. It's just routine.
That's the last one.
So that Article 35 will be, there'll be more official wording added to that, right?
Yeah. No, I'm going with that.
We'd probably even go out on a limb and attach a copy of the agreement. So people might actually know what is involved.
A lot of printing. How long is the lease for? Was it 20 years?
Yes, 20 years.
Is that typical, Cindy?
I don't know if there is anything that is typical. I mean, a building, the select board can lease for 30 years because they can lease land for up to nine, for an inevitable amount of time. If you school, you land, you might need school committee. I don't know about the history of this. But to me, 20 years is not something that strikes me as unusual. I don't, I don't, that didn't raise any ready flag, you know?
Just so I understand this, that the town leases it to the school committee? Is that?
My understanding is the town leases it to the district.
Our school district? Yeah. Okay, yeah.
The regional district, which is my understanding.
Kind of what I meant, just said the wrong word.
But I just forwarded to all of you an email from the superintendent, from the new superintendent. So you can all review the whole email chain. All right. So is there anything else on the warrant?
No.
All right, we have, we have the, the chief was waiting for one, one last. Has to do with the Knights of Columbus.
So the Knights of Columbus sent me something last night. Usually this goes through you, but I don't think they've, they've had fundraised the past two years. They, they did it for 15 years previous. St. Gabriel's does a fundraiser, the annual Tootsie Road Drive.
It's like a toll road.
The special needs children at Route 16. They want to do that on the 22nd. So I don't think you have a meeting before the 22nd. So usually that goes before you. And then the board sends it to me to do all the logistics and handle everything. And then you always ask them if it's okay with me. So I didn't know in the future, do you guys just, I don't think there's any formal formality in this. If I'm arranging everything, do you guys want me just to arrange it, deal with it, approve it and send it to you? Make sure there's no conflicts.
You know what? I mean, I guess, I guess I could certainly be wrong, but being a member of that organization, going back to Chief Horn, you would always send a letter to Chief Horn. And my understanding was he just approved it because I didn't think we needed a permit. I don't think, I don't think.
Mostly he's talking about like for the toll road stuff. They always come here, but we've never not approved one. So I mean.
Yeah, well, did we?
I mean, heck, I moved to give the police chief the authority to approve.
You guys are doing some pretty busy stuff now.
I thought that's, you know, I thought that was already done, but, all right, well, the motion would be made. Do I have a second? All right, all those in favor?
When I approve them, I'll shoot you an email.
Yeah, that way we, we should at least notify everybody that's happened.
Yeah, right. Takes one thing off your agenda.
Right.
Thanks.
All right. Our next meeting in two weeks. It's on the calendar. Anybody?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. Thank you all.
Bye, everybody. Thanks for coming.